This is the earliest we've been ready in a long time. Why we're not ready, I don't have a pen. Now, I drift off and get this meeting started here. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Wednesday, March 21st. We are being filmed on Channel 35, the city's cable television station where you can watch endless reruns, seven tonight and Sunday morning. You can all go back to talking. Mr. Savornich has agreed to vote twice. Well, even though we have only nine, we actually do have a very important presentation this morning, so I'm going to ask Mr. Fewer if he is ready to begin.
Woe is us, woe is us, because today may be a good day for the Pinchuk family, but it's a lousy day for everybody else in Los Angeles because Les Pinchuk is retiring. Say it ain't so, you can hear it from everybody up there. Many of us have known Les for years and know him to be... And he is a favorite person of many of ours because he does such a remarkably good job in the city attorney's office, focusing in particular on some of the hardest cases, our inverse condemnation cases, with just enormous expertise and a wealth of knowledge and background that spans 36 and a half years of loyal service to the residents of Los Angeles. I've kidded Les a lot in committee hearings about the... Well, just let us say it, he can't leave. And Les unfortunately has ignored that advice. And so, let's be talking, talk a little bit about his background. He was born in New York. He graduated from Fairfax High School. He got his... That's a Fairfax High School applause. I think I know where it came from. He got his Bachelor of Arts from UCLA and his law degree from UCLA. Been a member of the bar since 1965. He's a member of various legal organizations. And he joined the city attorney's office in 1965 after a year of service with the California Insurance Commission. And he became very quickly among the most widely respected lawyers in the city of Los Angeles. He has come to the city council, not always with good news, because not every case presents good news, but in a manner that commands the respect and attention of everybody with whom he speaks. He's not only a great lawyer, he's a great person, with lots of community service in a variety of contexts, including active involvement in the Jewish community. He's the past president of a Benet Breth Lodge. He served as a member of the advisory council to the president of the University of Judaism and the Earl Warren Institute of Law and Ethics of that university, as well as on a number of other committees of synagogues, of other community organizations. Les has been married to his wife Judith Grossman since 1966. She said this morning that she's sort of the bad angel on Les's shoulders, saying, "Les, 36 and a half years is time already," while the good angels who all of us try to be are saying, "Les, just one more year." In any event, Les, given his energy and enthusiasm and his zest for life, is obviously going into what we can call a semi-retirement. He's going to be engaging in some mediation and consulting work, traveling, and all of us, Les, wish you the very best. Your career has been remarkable. You're a great person. Your family is very lucky to be getting you back. The city will miss you enormously, but we have your phone number and we know where to find you. Congratulations.
A few more people have to say things about you first. Hang on. No, stay there, stay there. You just don't get the microphone yet. Ms. Misakowski is first.
Thank you, Madam President. It is a very, very sad day, not only for those around the council, but I think literally a number of citizens throughout the city, where Les has just been an invaluable person, not just with his legal knowledge and his institutional memory, but in helping to forge solutions. Most of the time that Les gets involved in a case, it's where some significant damage is done to where people's, to people's homes, that investment that may be the most important thing that they will ever do, and where they live. And very often, it's damage to the house, the loss may be, the house may be threatened with a total loss, unless works with them, with their attorneys, to help fashion something that is not only legally justifiable from the city's perspective, but also has a touch of humanity involved in terms of how it affects the people who are really having perhaps a significant part of their lives seriously damaged in terms of their home and their environment. When I said that he's got institutional memory, I think Les is an institution unto himself. And I just hope that, that before, as he is now leaving, he has done his best to convey as much of that knowledge, insight, and capability to those who are going to follow in your footsteps and bring those cases here to council, but also have to work within the community, within the constituents. So, Les, you are going to be very, very, very much missed.
Thank you.
Mr. Burton?
Yes, Les, first of all, I want to wish you and your family the best for the future. I just want to impart a few words of my experiences with Les, because some of us think we know more than the law, you know, and we ask questions and we want to do certain things. Well, Les always took the time to precisely explain to me why I was wrong and what purpose. And I learned, after a few years, I quit questioning, you know, Les, I don't know if you noticed that or not, but honestly, he has diligently represented this city for so many years, and I think that anybody who's had any contact with him can only reflect the respect that I think we all feel for him. So, I want to thank you for your service and wish you the best for the future.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Walters?
Your feet are going to hurt by the end of this. Go ahead. President, Les, it seems like we did this before. And you didn't retire, you got coaxed into staying around, and so now you're going to do it again. Does that mean that you're not going to leave?
I'll be around.
You'll be around, okay. My concern at the time when we thought you were going to do it before was, who is there to, with your background of knowledge, about these issues that you so aptly handle? And I still have that question, you know? What are we going to do without you? But I am very pleased that you did stay and that now you think you're going this time. One of my colleagues said to me, said, "Look at Les, he looks younger already." Retirees have a way of looking younger once they retire, but your service to the city has been exemplary, and I certainly have appreciated your knowledge and working with you and ability to depend on exactly what you're saying.
It's been nice.
So, I want to thank you for your service and wish you the best for the future.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Walters.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Les, it seems like we did this before. And you didn't retire. You got coaxed into staying around, and so now you're going to do it again. Does that mean that you're not going to leave?
I'll be around.
You'll be around. Okay. My concern at the time when we thought you were going to do it before was, who is there to, with your background of knowledge, about these issues that you so aptly handle? And I still have that question, you know? What are we going to do without you? But I am very pleased that you did stay and that now you think you're going this time. One of my colleagues said to me, said, "Look at Les. He looks younger already." Retirees have a way of looking younger once they retire. But your service to the city has been exemplary, and I certainly have appreciated your knowledge in working with you and ability to depend on exactly what you're saying. So, I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez.
I also had to rise, and many of my colleagues have said a lot of things I would have wanted to say. You have a certain amount of credibility with the council on some very difficult issues. Les, you need to know that I claim that you're more responsible for the city acquiring more land than Prop K has been able to do. There's no question in my mind that many of the settlements that we had to deal with basically were in the best interest of the city, and it was because of the way you presented them to us, and you know that we questioned them. The only reason I wanted to rise is I think that there are certain parts of the city where people do stand up for their land rights, and they'll look at the city and they'll say, "You're responsible." And other parts of the city, that might not be happening as much. And nowadays, when we're dealing with aging infrastructure, you're finding more and more issues of collapsed buildings and what happens in terms of those tenants and how the city reacts to it. And so, that expertise can be expanded a little bit more. So, we're going to miss you, because one of the things that allowed us to continue to support your recommendations was the fact that you were very credible with us. You were very honest with us, and you told us where we stood. And the reality is that we didn't do these things. It would cost us a lot more and personally damage a lot of people's dreams. And so, again, I want to commend you for your service to the city and thank you for your service to the city and wish you the best.
Okay, now my turn, and then your turn. I want to join with everybody else in wishing you the best, and especially in saying thank you for all the time you've put in and all these cases that you've handled, and really especially for your patience in dealing with the city council. I'm sure we're not any easier than opposing council, and actually, sometimes we are opposing council. But I certainly want to wish you the best. Cindy noted that it's a sad day for the city. It seems to be a sad day for everybody but you, and I hope that you have a wonderful time with your retirement and enjoy yourself a lot.
Thank you.
And now, you've waited all this time. You can say anything you want.
Thank you. Honorable members of council, I deeply appreciate from the bottom of my heart the warm feelings that have been expressed here today. And I say that both on my own behalf and on behalf of my family, my wife Judy, my sons Jeffrey and Evan. It's been a wonderful career with the city. I started representing the city in inverse condemnation cases in 1969 with the floods on the Big Tuhanga Wash. And from there, the Monterey Hills subsidiaries, the Petrero Canyon, the Castilla Mar Mesa, and many other areas of the Santa Monica Mountains where landslides occurred. I've always tried to represent the city to the best of my possible ability, with the understanding that the California Constitution does provide that private property owners are entitled to just compensation when a substantial cause of the damage or destruction of their properties are public improvements, is deliberately designed, constructed, and/or maintained. And I've always tried, when I come into these cases, to make things better. I really hope that I have. I thank the various members of council and all their staffs for working with me in trying to make things better, in trying to correct landslides, in trying to make people whole, at least monetarily, even though it may not be emotionally, from the trauma that have been caused by landslides and by floods and by other natural disasters. I know sometimes the council dreaded seeing me come through the door, because in many times, the only thing I was coming for was money that I felt was in the best interest of the city to pay these people. I've always tried also to do the best for the citizens of the city of Los Angeles, and I hope I have. As I leave here, and as I say, my career has been wonderful and the people have been wonderful that I've worked with, many among the council that I've worked with, many of their staffs, I would hope that with the more stringent grading ordinances and with a more prudent look at not building in sensitive areas, such as in floodplains and mouths of canyons too close to toes of slopes on deep fills, that eventually, the exposure of the city in these type of cases will be reduced. That is my true hope. Unfortunately, we are paying, at this stage, a good deal for mistakes that were made, for a lack of knowledge at the time many of the developments in the city were put in. But I would hope with the passage of time and with the new ordinances and with a more prudent look, so that sometimes builders are told perhaps they should not build in these sensitive areas, that these cases will reduce and the exposure of the city in these cases will diminish. But again, I thank you for a wonderful career. I thank you for your friendship, and hopefully, we will see each other in the years to come. I will still be around. I thank you again.
Congratulations, Les. Thanks very much. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. We do now have a quorum, so now let's try it again. Call the roll, please.
Burnson, Chick, Fear, Galanter, Hernandez, Holden, Misakowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Thomas, Savornic, Walters, Farrar, 11 members present at the quorum. Madam President.
All right. Thank you. Before we start, members of the council, let me let you know that we have a couple of items with a lot of people here, and we do have one council member excused to leave at, I believe it's at noon, which will put us at exactly 10. And if anybody leaves who isn't excused to leave, that will break the quorum. So, we're going to try to get the meeting rolling as expeditiously as possible and keep it rolling as expeditiously as possible. So, let us begin with the first item.
Approval of the minutes.
The minutes. Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And those two.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items requesting to be continued. Item number one, request from Building and Safety to continue that item to March 28th.
All right. Is there any objection? If not, item one's continued to March 28th.
Item number three, request to continue that item to April 3rd.
Oh, goody. That goes even longer. If we have no objection to that, item three is continued to April 3rd.
Item number seven, a request from Councilmember Hernandez to continue that item to Friday, March 23rd.
All right. Without any objection, that's continued. Item seven's continued until Friday, this Friday.
Item number eight, a request from Councilmember Holden to continue that item to April 6th.
All right. There's no objection. Item eight is continued to April 6th.
Item number 11, a request from Councilmember Padilla to continue that to April 11th.
All right. Any... Without objection. Any objections on item 11? That's continued to April 11th.
Item number 18, a request from Councilmember Hernandez to continue that to April 4th.
All right. Item 18, April 4th. Mr. Burnson.
Yes. Being as we will not have 12 members today, and we will not have 12 members on Friday, I'm going to withhold on item number 12, so that'll be heard next Wednesday instead.
So, just so we're clear, and I've got it formally correct, so you're asking that we continue item 12 until?
No, I'm asking... What I want to do is withhold on it, so it'll go over. It's an actual withholding action.
Okay. But we have a lot of people who want to be heard.
Well, I would presume that we could also have the public hearing at that time, too.
Is there any... Madam City Attorney?
Before they take a vote, you could, yes.
So, we could have it, even though it's the time it would be coming for a second?
Technically, you...
Well, let's straighten this out, since sometimes I get conflicted.
Give me two minutes.
All right. Hold on. You and Mr. Burnson can work that out. All right. Go on.
Okay. Items 23 through 26 were inadvertently placed on the agenda. No action is required on these items, as they were acted on March 16th, and they'll be over second reading on the 23rd.
All right. So, items 23 through 26 are off the agenda.
Item 38, request to continue that to April 20th.
Okay. Item 38 goes to April 20th.
Item 47, on behalf of Council District III, continue that item to March 23rd.
All right. That's Friday, the day after tomorrow. Item 47 is continued until Friday?
And item 53, also on behalf of Councilmember Chick, to continue that item to March 28th.
All right. That's next week. All right. Item 53 goes to the 28th. And let's take note that we also have several ordinances on the agenda, and since they're... Are these first readings or second readings?
First.
These are all first reading, which means that none of these ordinances will be finally acted on today, because we don't have 12 members. In order for an ordinance to pass on the first reading, there must be a unanimous vote with at least 12 people present. We don't have 12 people present, so even if we have a unanimous vote, they still kick over for one more week. Just so everybody's warned about that. Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
I have a letter from the applicant on item 10, asking that that matter be withdrawn. That's a Caldera hearing.
All right.
Rather than withdraw it, at this point, the council would need to vote to deny it.
All right. So, let's take a...
I move denial.
All right. Let's take a vote on item 10, Ms. Misakowski's motion to deny. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right. Item 10 is denied. The motion is approved.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to ask on item 11, that was continued by Mr. Padilla. For some reason, my council agenda says the last day to act is on the 23rd. Can we legally... I want to continue it. I want to abide by that. Just...
Continue until Friday would be fine as well.
Okay.
Yeah, just that the council...
Okay. That's done. Now, but I just... Although we voted on item 10, I noticed that that is a required public hearing item, and we did have somebody who wished to be heard. So, I think I'm going to have to ask to reconsider item 10.
I believe the card is in opposition, so the motion to deny...
It just says general comments. Mr. Bailey?
My name is Alan Bailey, 700 South Flower Street, 11th floor. I'm here representing Cosmo. We wanted to withdraw the item today rather than take a denial. I don't think there's a time limit matter here. You have another 45 days beyond the time that's stated on that, and our preference would be that it would be continued. We discussed this with staff yesterday, and it was our understanding that that was what was going to happen today.
Madam President, it is listed on our council file as a time limit by March 26th, so I believe that the denial can still allow the process to go forward in requesting the conditional use, which has not yet been scheduled. But it's at this time, I believe that the denial is still appropriate.
All right. Well, the item is before us. You've heard the gentleman ask for it to be continued, and Ms. Misakowski asked for denial. We are now going to open the roll on Ms. Misakowski's motion one more time. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay. The motion's approved, and the item is denied. Next.
Items noticed for public hearing, items two and four through six are Building and Safety confirmations of assessments.
All right. I don't have any cards on any of those. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to be heard on items two, four, five, or six? Seeing none, the public hearings are closed. Ms. Misakowski?
I'm sorry.
This is off the other... Okay. Seems to be the wrong thing here. Let's get rid of those. Okay. Now then. Items two, four, five, and six. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved.
Item nine on the regular agenda is a public convenience or necessity. We need a motion from the floor to grant the application.
All right. We do have somebody who wants to be heard on this item. Melrose Larry Green.
Good morning, folks. I'm Melrose Larry Green. You know, I read these agendas, and I have to use my sechel, and every once in a while, something jumps happy... Jumps right at you. This, item number nine, is hearing comments relative to the application of determination of public convenience or necessity. Listen to this. For the sale of alcohol for off-site consumption located at 7017-21 Santa Monica Boulevard. I live in that area. I live about a block from there. And then it says here, determination... The recommendations for action. One, determine that the issuance of a liquor license at above address 7017-21 Santa Monica Boulevard will serve the, quote, "public convenience or necessity," unquote, and will not tend to create a law enforcement problem. Then it goes on to grant the application. Well, folks, I don't know how many of you know what goes on at Santa Monica Boulevard at 7017-21. There's drug dealing, there's male prostitutes, there's transvestites, and there's Melrose Larry Green trying to walk home at night. All right? Now, if you don't... I don't even want to go there. I don't want to go there. But I don't... I really don't think you need to sell alcohol on this street. I mean, the other ones, you do what you want in West LA and Bel Air, but not in my backyard. I'm Melrose Larry Green. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. Members of the council, any comments? Item number nine.
Madam Chair, on behalf of Council District 4, I move the recommendation.
Mr. Hernandez has moved the recommendation. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right. That's approved. No, no, no. Wait. There's 10 ayes and one no. There's a no vote. Yeah, I've got you. All right. It's still approved.
Madam Chair, you had asked about item 12.
Yes.
If we withhold on that, the council would have to have a hearing before they take a vote on it next week, but you can continue it by withholding it and continue the public hearing.
Continue the public hearing to next week. Okay. So, Mr. Burnson? The city attorney says it's okay for us to continue the public hearing on item 12 until next week.
Okay. I'll withhold on number 12 and continue the public hearing to that time.
So, all of you who have filled out these cards, if you want to take them back, so you don't have to write it out next time, we'll be happy to let you do that. But we're going to continue... The item will be held over until next week, and we'll have the public hearing at that time. That's item 12. Now, I've had a request from the chair of the Public Works Committee with respect to item 19, asking that that be continued for one week. Is there any objection to continuing item 19 for one week? Ms. Walters?
Yes. Madam Chair, it would be my hope that we would not continue it, because it has been here several times already, and to vote on it today...
Okay. Well, let me suggest, as we proceed through the agenda, that you and Mr. Padilla, I guess it is... See if you can settle that. Was it you who asked for the continuance? Is it your committee? It's Joel. Oh, it's Joel's committee. That's what it is. Sorry. And he's not here. When is he expected?
Friday.
Is he here on Friday? Perhaps we could just continue it till Friday, then, so he can be here.
You'll continue it to Friday, not...
Do you want to leave it on the desk for now?
Can we just leave it on the desk for right now?
Sure. Let's just leave it on the desk. The only items on which I have cards, just so everybody knows what's going on here, are 13, where I have lots of them, 19, 50, and 59, where we have quite a few. So, what I'd like to do is take a vote on... Or at least find out if we have any specials on the items other than those. The ones where we have the cards will be called special. We're going to get to them in a minute. The other items on the agenda... Do we have any specials? Let's just go through them and find out if we have any specials. So, 12 and 13, we have... I'm sorry. 12, we continue. 13, we have cards, so that's special. Item 19 is still on the desk. So, we have 14, 15, 16, 17, 20, and 21, where the public hearings have been held. Any specials, members of the council? No specials. Open the roll on those items. We are talking about 14, 15, 16, 17, 20, and 21.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Mr. Pacheco.
I have an amendment to 14, so I call that special.
Okay. We'll hold 14. 15, 16, 17, 20, and 21. All right. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Okay. And let's just... And let's just, there's not a whole lot left here unless we have a lot of specials. Items 22, 27 through 37, and 39 through 46, and 48 through 57. Do we have any specials? I have no cards on any of-
39 through 45, that's 48 through-
Yeah, we just, I included those, I think.
And 54A.
And 54A. Do we have any specials? I do not have any cards from members of the public on those items. So the public hearings on those items are going to be closed. Any specials? No specials? Open the roll. 27, 22, 27 through 37, 39 through 46, 48 through 52, and 54A. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. See how easy that was? Now, this takes us back to-
Do you want to do the continued agenda? 56 and 58 through 58.
All right. Do we have any specials of, that's the only other agenda? Is there another agenda I'm missing?
Items 56 through 58 on the regular agenda are ordinances. Rules and Elections Committee waived consideration of those items.
All right. Any specials? 56 through 58. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved, but because they're ordinances, they will carry over one week, as will item 22.
And also 59 is on the continued agenda, and I-
Yeah, but we have a lot of cards for that, so that's, we're not, we're not going to rush through that. We're going to do 59 next. Now, according to my tally here, we have left 13, 19-
14.
What happened to 14? Oh, the amendment. Right. That's right. 13, 14, 19, and 59, right? Okay. Mr. Fuhrer, you want 59 or 13 first? 59 first. All right. Now, we do have, as I mentioned, a large number of people who wish to be, wait a minute, I had cards on something else here. I'm sorry, we have to reconsider. I, I'm sorry, they got by me here. They're buried in the others. Item 50, we have a card, and item 19, well, 19 we haven't gotten to. Okay. Item 50, we have a card, so let's hold that for the moment. Let's do 59. First, we're going to reconsider 50. Is there any objection? Reconsidering 50. 50 is reconsidered, but now we're on 59. I have many people who wish to be heard. First, we-
No, let's, let's, let's do one at a time.
If somebody gets up on the second one that's already spoken, they'll know, they'll know what to do. I can't read the first name. Ms. Nagel from the Million Mom March, followed by Luis Tolly, Kay Holman, Deborah Sheridan, and then I'll read you the rest of them. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Maria Nagel from the Million Mom March, and I think fingerprints are absolutely essential in identification before you can sell a firearm. You can change your appearance, I'll accept your height, as we all know, but you can't change your fingerprints, and it's the only way that we can have a database for felons and people who shouldn't buy guns. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tolly.
Louis Tolly with Handgun Control, Jim and Sarah Brady's organization. We strongly support this measure. It's simply about enforcing gun laws. This law will allow stronger enforcement of our gun laws so that we can prosecute criminals who lie on their background check forms and try to sneak through the system. The attorneys tell us, the district attorneys tell us, that in order to prosecute these people successfully, we need fingerprints. So this is all about going after criminals trying to buy guns. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Holman.
Thank you. I'm Kay Holman with the Million Mom March. This ordinance makes perfect sense. I don't understand why anybody would not want to support it. We want our law enforcement people to be effective, and even the people who are opposed to firearms control want better enforcement of existing gun laws, and this is exactly what that will bring to us, and I think it's an excellent ordinance, and we should definitely support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Sheridan, to be followed by Arthur Peiser, Bobby Peiser, and Larry Green.
I'm Deborah Sheridan. I support this ordinance. I'm also with the Million Mom March because we do need safer streets. I do not see a downside to this. I heard on the radio coming over that background checks are not quite as effective as they might be, and this one will help us tremendously to get guns, illegal guns, off the street. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Arthur Peiser.
Pull the microphone up closer to you. There you go.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
My name is Arthur Peiser. I'm not much of a mom, but I do support what they're doing. It's hard. I lost a daughter to a small hen, yeah. It was easily concealed. If she had seen that, she might not have, might still be with us. That's about all I can say.
Mrs. Peiser.
I'm Bobby Peiser, Million Mom March. Survivor of a victim of gun violence, gun trauma, and anything that can help, from fingerprinting to licensing and to registering guns, is a step in the right direction. Nothing can replace my daughter. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Green.
You know, I don't really have any words to explain the emotions we all just went through, but this ordinance, if you should pass it, will send a message to George Bush, to Rudy Giuliani, to people all over the country, in Washington, and mayors in other cities. This is a very courageous ordinance. I know there's probably people on the other side that would say, "Well, people have the rights to bear guns." But I think when you hear, I mean, these terrible stories, and we're all victims, when you hear something like this, "We're all victims," and nothing can be done to replace the loved ones. I've had victims in my own family that have been victims of gun violence, and I can't echo the comments of the other people strong enough. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes the cards that I have, so the public hearing is closed. Mr. Fuhrer.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I rise to urge a unanimous vote of the City Council in support of an ordinance that was itself unanimously backed by the Police Commission, strongly backed by Police Chief Parks and the LAPD Guns Unit, and emerged with unanimous support from the Public Safety Committee to our council. The reason is clear. As Louis Tolly indicated, this is about enforcing the laws that we have better. There is a state law that precludes criminals, felons, and dangerous misdemeanors from attempting to purchase a weapon. Yet, when about a year and a half ago, we held a summit in this room of the top law enforcement officials, prosecutors, police, sheriff, FBI, ATF, repeatedly the question was asked, have there, has there been any effort made to prosecute the thousands of people who illegally try to purchase guns? And colleagues, it's interesting to note that for the last year, for which we have full statistics, 1999, nearly 5,000 criminals, including murderers, rapists, robbers, and others, tried illegally to buy guns in California. The answer to the question, are those people prosecuted for trying to do so, is no. Prosecutors and police asked me to introduce this ordinance because they want to effectively be able to prosecute those who illegally attempt to buy handguns in our city. And by requiring a thumbprint of a purchaser, we're giving law enforcement the tools they need if they choose to prosecute an illegal purchaser of a weapon, because without the thumbprint, there is no positive way to identify beyond a reasonable doubt, the criminal standard in court, that this person who's being prosecuted was, in fact, the person who tried to buy the gun in the first place and then falsified the application for doing so. Ordinance is very common sense. It should get unanimous support from the council, and I urge that it happen because if nothing else, there should be a broad consensus around this council, no matter where you stand on the ideological spectrum, no matter where you stand on the issues of gun violence, and on handguns in general. We all agree enforcing the laws we have better has to be a top priority. I urge your support, colleagues. Thank you.
Mr. Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, I have no problem with supporting this. I want to clarify that right up front, but I do want to ask how we're going to get the clearances on the fingerprints. Currently, and I am, I recall when now Supervisor Yaroslavsky and I first got the AFIS system, which is the automated fingerprint identification system for the city. It was an innovation, but unfortunately, the department has not given the proper personnel and follow-up to this system, and currently, there is a huge backup of fingerprints being waited to be identified, and unfortunately, this very valuable crime-fighting tool is being wasted. So my question is, maybe somebody can answer this for me, how are we going to determine? We have, under California law, there's a 15-day waiting period for anybody who purchases a firearm to have clearance. And how are we going to identify these people who may slip through the cracks or may falsify their applications in a period of time so that we can make this adjudication? I'm very concerned about that, and I would like for perhaps the Police Department to give me an answer on that. Can you guarantee that within the 15-day period, that these fingerprints that are taken at point of sale will be cleared?
Sir, I'm Lieutenant Don Farrell. I'm the officer in charge of Section 1 of Detective Headquarters Division, which includes the gun unit.
Are you in charge of the AFIS system also?
No, sir. That's a separate portion of the Police Department.
Well, just tell me how you're going to, what my question was, can you guarantee that the AFIS system is going to be able to identify them?
Sir, we're not seeking this fingerprint for use as part of the AFIS system. We're seeking this as an investigative tool for our detectives to use once the Department of Justice has denied a transfer of the firearm or sale of a firearm. It then allows us to go-
Excuse me, just, excuse me, just one second. See, this is not, well, that's not what it's for, as far as I'm concerned. What it's for, as far as I'm concerned, is to prevent a criminal from getting that gun. In 15 days, that gun, I hope you folks are listening to this, because I think this is what you intended also. In 15 days after the purchase of that gun, the gun will be released to that individual unless there has been an identification that this person shouldn't be getting a firearm. And that's not going to happen under this system unless we can clarify how those fingerprints are going to be identified within the 15-day period. Now, I think, you know, I don't know what's going on at the department, and frankly, I'm very critical of how the AFIS system, which some of us fought very hard to bring into the, into Los Angeles, is not being used properly. But I'm telling you that you're not going to get what you really want. All you're going to get is the department to have a fingerprint on file somewhere that they can follow up afterwards to try to apprehend somebody who was a criminal and shouldn't have bought it. But in the meantime, that individual is going to have that firearm, and that's the problem. I'm telling you it is, and you better clarify this. I'm going to vote for this, but I'm telling you, the enforcement is the important part. We need to find a way to get these fingerprints identified within the 15-day period so that firearm can be denied to somebody that shouldn't have it. Right now, this is not going to do that by the way you're, way it's couched.
Ms. Walters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To Mr. Fuhrer, I am very pleased that you have brought this. It's another step in the fight for gun control in our gun-crazed society, it seems. I heard, much to my dismay, a commentator on TV over the weekend say, in talking about gun control, that there'd been very little outcry since the Santee shooting, unlike the Columbine shooting and the shooting in Kentucky and Mississippi, I believe. And I wonder if we're becoming so inured to these things that they just no longer matter. They don't disturb us, they don't make us think, they don't make us take actions to eliminate this menace to our society. So while the fingerprinting seems to be a small step, I think it will be a major step in getting people to register the, it'll be a major step toward getting guns registered in our society, to register the fingerprints so that the Police Department, as they're leaving the table, can have access to these fingerprints to look for these people who are committing crimes in our community with weapons and causing the devastation. For all the folks who say that guns don't kill people, people do. Guns are the instrument of the killing, and they cannot be excused and written off as not being part of the problem. The major problem is the guns themselves. So again, I thank Mr. Fuhrer for bringing the motion. I hope we'll vote for it unanimous.
Ms. Mizakowski.
I am very pleased that we are having this discussion today and that the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee, which was unanimous, is being put forward. And I agree with Mr. Burnson that the ultimate goal is exactly as you described it, that we will have a system, not only in the city and not only with LAPD, but statewide, and then ultimately, I see the evolution of this, is that every gun dealer, at least those that are retail dealers, will have the capacity by way of a computer program to immediately get that whole system in where the thumbprint will be available to anybody, and they will be prohibited from actually getting the weapon. But as we each know, and all know, that we have to take steps incrementally. Right now, this is being recommended by the chief, it is recommended by the department who has worked on this, and it is essentially another tool in ensuring, or attempting to ensure, that folks who ought not to have weapons don't have the ability to get weapons. One of the striking numbers is the number of people who were deterred under the systems as inadequate as they were from attempting to buy weapons in terms of at least 5,000, and those are the ones we know about. What is, I think, most frightening is those that we don't know about, who slipped through by way of false identity, by way of everything else. And this attempts to ensure that that is an identity-proof way of creating a record, ultimately leading to the point when we have the systems in place to making sure that that person will not get the weapon. But I think that this is a step to really ensure the laws as they are today, not allowing people who ought not to have weapons or prohibited from having weapons, to create the system in place that will ultimately allow that prohibition to be enforced. So I really do hope that we can get a unanimous vote on this.
Mr. Fuhrer.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I wanted to make a specific motion. Our colleague, Mr. Holden, who chairs the IGR Committee, has asked that item two on this matter, which is an instruction to the chief legislative analyst to seek a change in state law, be sent to his committee so that the only item before us would be item one of this matter. Now, with regard to item one, I just wanted to say a closing word. You know, clearly, all of us want to make our best efforts at preventing a criminal from getting a gun in the first place, and Mr. Burnson and all of us share that goal. The purpose of, the purposes of this ordinance are two. One is to provide meaningful deterrence for those who might otherwise seek to obtain a weapon illegally. Another is to assure that when criminals do attempt to make these purchases, and as I mentioned, for 1999, the state identified 5,000 such people, that we are able successfully to prosecute them. Because if they were trying to buy a gun, undoubtedly, they were going to be engaging in another crime, perhaps similar to the one, the murder, the robbery, the rape that they perpetrated in the first place. And so the point of this is to give the prosecutors the tool they have asked for here, and I agree with Mr. Burnson about a long-term goal to even make that state system all the more effective for today in our jurisdiction, is to give prosecutors a tool to enforce the laws we have better. Thank you.
Mr. Holden.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Fuhrer. I just want to point out that the, Mr. Rossi of the Department of Justice has some questions about the Wabler, whether or not, under certain circumstances, that this should be a felony. And if it were amended, if the, if the bill, Senate Bill 52 were amended, then it would jeopardize the passage of the bill, which includes the fingerprinting. So we want to hold that until we can get some sense of what the legislature is thinking about regarding Wabler felony as opposed to misdemeanor. But what we are adopting here today is, in fact, a misdemeanor. And, yes, and I don't know what the penalty will be, but it's going to be some kind of a substantial fine in order to be a deterrent on the part of a gun dealer, and prevent them from selling to people who could otherwise be criminals. I have studied this problem for a long time, and we discovered that you could be a gun dealer from your home. You could be licensed to sell guns from your home, and many of these gun dealers were selling guns to just about anybody illegally. They were not in compliance with the waiting period, even though the law has changed, require 1.7 days, then 15 days here in the state of California. 1.7 days, then 15 days here in the state of California. That creates a real problem for us. I would say an additional problem is that when you find a gun dealer who does not intend to comply with the law, but try to get profit by selling more guns than authorized, they're just going to buy them and sell them, even the legitimate gun dealers. We have to sort of monitor their stock. How many they buy, how many they sell. So you go beyond registration. You've got to find out how many weapons they are buying for the purpose of selling it from their gun stores. And then, if the sales are not comparable, legal sales are not comparable with the purchase, then you've got a problem with that gun dealer. And Mr. Fuhrer, you're hot on this, and you might want to look at some additional legislation, or we can include it in review when it comes before the Intergovernmental Relations Committee. I'd be delighted to do that. But that's something that we have to look at as well. That's a loophole. The gun dealers who want to make money will use it, and they'll get away with it until we catch them, but we've got to close that loophole as well. And I will vote for this before, as amended.
Mr. Savornic.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. Do we have a city attorney present that could answer a couple of questions in regard to some of the finer points of this proposed draft ordinance? Good morning. As some of my colleagues have articulated this morning, that if an individual tries to purchase a firearm in the state of California, there's a 15-day waiting period. And during the 15-day waiting period, the Department of Justice is able to report back to the firearms dealer, I would assume, or some entity reports back to the firearms dealer, on whether or not this individual can legally purchase this firearm or not. What we had before us today is instructions to the city attorney to draft an ordinance which would require a thumbprint, and as Mr. Burnson stated, that there is no interaction that is going to take place between that thumbprint being harvested from the potential buyer and the clearance of the gun. So the question I have is that if a person who is not supposed to buy this weapon, which I assume is a convicted felon, is it illegal for the convicted felon to attempt to buy the gun, or is the illegality occur when the transaction is consummated? Or both?
First, let me say, I'm Jim Axteau, Deputy City Attorney. I believe that both of those things are illegal, so that one of the purposes of this ordinance is so that once the state has determined that the person who purports to be purchasing the gun should not get the gun, the police department and the prosecutor can then use the thumbprint to determine positively who that person is and hopefully bring a prosecution.
Now, the person who first finds out that the person who's not supposed to buy the gun is trying to buy it is the dealer, correct? Or is it the DOJ?
Well, I would think it would depend, but the entity that's in charge of making that decision is the State Department of Justice.
Okay, let's walk through the process. A convicted, paroled felon walks into a gun store and tries to purchase a firearm, writes down a name, either I would assume, if it's a smart convicted, paroled felon, a phony name, and then goes, tries to wait out this waiting period. At the end of the waiting period, a statement is... or a notification says this person is either cleared or not cleared to purchase the gun. If it is not cleared, and it says, "No, this person should not purchase this gun," or "There's no history of this person, this is a phony name, forget it," what actions are then triggered, short of this thumbprint being present, that law enforcement can prosecute the bad guy trying to buy the gun?
Carmel Selas, Special Assistant City Attorney. If I can just add to... Can, with the added thumbprint, that allows for better enforcement and prosecution.
How about if the thumbprint... How about if this idea was never present? That means they couldn't prosecute?
Which is exactly where we are today.
What I'm saying, they can't prosecute without the thumbprint?
It's theoretically possible, but without the added evidence of the thumbprint, there's no way to verify that the person who attempted the purchase is the person arrested.
How many individuals have been prosecuted in the county of Los Angeles, or if you have other figures in the state of California, that have tried to purchase a firearm illegally? Who is a felon?
We have not been able to determine with precision the number, but very few, for this very reason, because of the lack of verifiable evidence, again, that the person who attempted the purchase is the person arrested and prosecuted.
My time is up.
Just about, yep.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, members of the council, you know, when it comes to these issues, we usually stand on one side of the line or the other. Some of us believe strongly that weapons of violence shouldn't be on the streets, whether it be ammunition, guns, and so forth, and that a peaceful society can't exist without guns. Others believe that you need guns to protect yourselves and want to basically preserve that right. I think that what's before us today doesn't prohibit people from protecting themselves. Basically, it's another requirement to acquiring a gun, and it does provide some protection. Someone who's out to commit a crime and wants a gun for that purpose is not going to go get fingerprinted to purchase it. And at least, it becomes another deterrent. I know what side of the line I stand on, and that's why I'm going to support what's before us. And I think that every step we take in that direction guarantees us, from my perspective, a safer society. And it provides the police department another tool to deter crime. I'm just tired of reading in the papers, watching in the news, and seeing in my own neighborhood people losing their lives, being maimed because of guns on the streets. And there's no question in my mind that, as a public official, I have the right to do something about that.
Mr. Burnson.
I would like to offer a friendly amendment to this ordinance, Michael. I'm concerned about identifying the individuals who should not be given the firearm at the end of 15 days. So I'm going to ask for that the mayor, the planning commission, and the police chief place within the police budget sufficient funds to hire or to train and employ personnel who can clear the AFIS system, not only for the backlog that he has, which prevents crime enforcement and arrests of criminals, identification, but to process these fingerprints within the 15-day period so that criminals and those who should not be cleared will not have access to these firearms. So I would place that as a friendly amendment.
I have a question for the... Hal, if I could, on your time with the city attorney, please. Gail? Gail? Quick question on Hal's time. Hal just made an amendment to the matter before us. The matter before us is an ordinance on first reading. Hal's amendment, which is fine as long as it doesn't impede our ability to pass the ordinance today, is to request some item in the budget, so sufficient funds for the police and others to do their job.
We instruct the... We instruct the mayor, the police chief, and the planning... and the commission to place within the police budget sufficient funds so that these applications may be processed within the 15-day period prior to release of the weapon. And that doesn't necessarily need to be part of the ordinance, it can be a separate action.
As long as it's separate, can we do both today?
If it's not part of the ordinance, he can make that motion, you can vote on the ordinance.
Yes.
Okay.
While we're not done yet, we'll get your clarification. Mr. Savornic, and then Mr. Holden, and then we'll see what happens. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. The question I have for city attorney is that I heard statistics that over 5,000 felons tried to purchase weapons last year in the state of California and were foiled from doing so because of safeguards which are presently in place. Of the 5,000 people that we mentioned in the discussion, how many people in the city of Los Angeles tried to purchase handguns or guns that shouldn't have last year?
We don't have that information today.
Do we have it for any year? I didn't hear you.
No.
So we don't have any information, knowing whether or not there are... that this law is actually a law which is going to solve a problem?
Well...
Because we don't know... I didn't ask for a response. One of the things to which we know very well is that if indeed there are individuals out there who are trying to purchase these weapons illegally, that there must be some entity that could tell us in the city of Los Angeles how many of these individuals tried to do this in the city of LA. And we don't have those numbers, in fact, we don't have any numbers, but today, we are going forward, passing an ordinance saying, if they're out there, we want to try to stop them from buying the guns, even though what I have heard is that the safeguards that are already in place stop them from getting them. And so I'm not going to support this today. I don't think that we're... I don't think we're taking... I don't think we're taking a gun out of the hand of a person who wants to commit a crime with it, because I don't think that they go into gun stores and purchase them. I think they get them through other means. And in previous types of important legislation like this, I have had the benefit of at least having statistics before me that if out of the 5,000 people in the state of California who tried to purchase a weapon who shouldn't have last year, that 4,000 of them were in the city of Los Angeles, that would give me some statistics on which to base a prudent and rational decision. But when we don't have any information at all on whether or not any of these folks, the 5,000 that were turned down, tried to do it in LA, and I'm sure there's numbers of them, but there's no way to know. And so frankly, to tell you the truth, I don't think that this is going to take one illegal gun off the street. I think we are painting law-abiding citizens with the same stroke of a brush as we do criminals, and frankly, I'm offended by it.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. Burnson, your question, your amendment was that you put enough money in the budget for the police department to verify whether or not this person is the criminal or not?
Yes. Currently, what happened, Mr. Holden, on your time, the AFIS system, which is a great crime-fighting tool, by the way, for apprehending criminals, has not been used properly by our department because of the backlog, which takes sometimes months before they can process fingerprints.
Okay, I got your point.
I want to put enough money into the budget so that we can identify, within a 15-day period process, all the fingerprints that are generated because of purchases of firearms.
Oh, well, you've got to have something... Do you have a gun detail? I just checked with the police department. And they... Just a minute. And there is a number of weapons that are being purchased each day and throughout the year in the city of LA. And there's a motion in, I mean, an ordinance now, saying you can only buy two, you can buy two, as many as two a year. I think that Mr. Fuhrer put something in like that. Two a month, or whatever, two a month.
I believe it was one a month.
One a month? So 12 a year?
Which is state law.
Well, I understand. That's a lot of fingerprinting, and you've got to do it each time, that's a lot of money in the budget. But this is the responsibility of the Department of Justice, and therefore, if they don't sign off in 15 days, what happens? Does the person get the weapon anyway?
No. Under state law, they're required to do the check within 15 days.
Then why would we have to do it locally, then, by putting money in the budget?
What AFIS does is input into the system, into the state's system, all guns used in crime, and my understanding is that there is, in fact, a backlog, which deters enforcement...
That's a different...
But it is somewhat distant.
So the Justice Department would not be able to process it within 15 days either, huh?
Yes.
The processing of a background check is distinct from AFIS, which inputs guns used in crime.
I understand that, but if who is going to...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Hold on, hold on. This is Mr. Holden's time.
Can I... Would you grant me this time to ask this question?
Give him 10 seconds, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
The purpose of this ordinance is to identify a criminal who should not be... have a gun released within the 15-day period. Is somebody... Is either the state or the local authorities capable of doing that?
The state is charged and capable of conducting the background check within 15 days. Again, the purpose of the fingerprint is to verify after the fact. It is not correct.
After the fact, okay? Okay, now we're back on Mr. Holden's time.
Well, we're going to use fingerprints, and the Department of Justice can be required by state law to verify whether or not this person is a criminal, and it can all be done within the 15 days. I don't think that we should... State law should require them to do that. But we should not have to put up the money using local funds for that purpose. This gun can be used anywhere in the state of California. If it's found to be illegal, illegally accepted, then why should we pay... Why should the taxpayers here pay for that? I just think the Department of Justice should verify the fingerprints, whether or not the person is a criminal, all within the 15-days waiting period. So that's just an added burden on local government. Your amendment should go to committee, Mr. Burnson. And let's find out what it's going to cost, let's look at the numbers game, let's look at the special task force, and then we'll get it out real fast. Let it go to committee, just like the Part 2 of this motion. And I would so move that, Mr. Burnson, it's a good point, but let's send that to the committee rather than debate it further.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, I move the previous question on the entire matter.
I saw it coming. All right. There being no one else who has yet signed up to speak, who hasn't already spoken twice, the previous question is declared. That cuts off debate. Now, the first item we had was Mr. Burnson's amendment, which was to include in today's action a request to the mayor and the police department to put in enough money to verify the signatures. Mr. Fuhrer, what is your... The first item is Mr. Burnson's amendment. Do you want to just accept that and incorporate it, or do you want a separate vote on it?
Well, there appears to be...
Mr. Holden suggested that the amendment go to committee. All right, let's separate the questions. So now, Madam City Attorney, you're going to have to help me with this one. Since the amendment just came up, if the amendment passes, it's included in today's vote. If it's not passed today, can we still send it to committee?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll open the roll first on Mr. Burnson's amendment, which is to include the request to the mayor and the police department for the...
It's separate from the ordinance.
Yes, it is separate from the ordinance. Then we're voting on the amendment first. Open the roll on the amendment. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, three noes.
That passed. That is approved. Now we have Mr. Fuhrer's motion, which is the...
The ordinance itself.
It's the ordinance itself. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, one noes.
All right, that is also approved.
No, the ordinance would go over one week.
I know, you just have to let me finish. But because... I was in the middle of saying, because there aren't 12 people here, it goes over one week for a second reading. All right, that's Item 59. Now, just while we're at... Between things here, Item 19, we had been discussing when that would go to. That is now going to be continued by mutual agreement of the people who disagreed to April 11th. And just hang on, we're not done yet. We have Item 13. Now, on Item 13, a public hearing has been held, but we do have a lot of people, in this case, on both sides of the issue, who have put in cards.
Yeah, Madam President, we've had a hearing already. Why don't we have seven minutes on each side?
All right. Any objection to seven minutes on each side? We'll see how far we get. I think, in fairness to the debate, we'll start with those who are opposed to this one. What I'm going to do is call the cards in order till we've used up the seven minutes, then we'll switch to the other side, and then, unless I hear a further motion, all of the cards, even people who did not get to speak, will be incorporated as having appeared on the issue. So we're going to start... There's a six-minute clock here. Can I have a seven-minute? All right, so we'll just do it that way, all right. So we'll begin with Dwight Van Horn, followed by Joe Vampola and Merrill Gibson, and then I'll call the next ones. Mr. Van Horn. And just before you start, and before I start the clock, let me ask those of you whose names I've called... I've called to, get yourselves in position, because the clock keeps running. Go ahead.
Good morning, thank you for this opportunity. I'm here to speak against this proposed ordinance from a training point of view. I'm retired from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, it'll be two years this May. My duties there including, included several years working as a firearms instructor for the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, and the last 13 years in the crime lab as a firearms examiner. The training issue that I see here that's involved with law enforcement at the time, currently, most police departments around the country, including the Federal Law Enforcement Training Center in Brunswick, Georgia, as well as our military, is wrestling with the problem of one-size-fits-all handgun, much in the same way that people of smaller stature and some physical disabilities are trying to wrestle with the handguns that would be left after passage of this ordinance for people to purchase in the city of Los Angeles. One size does not fit all when it comes to handguns. People who have smaller hands and are of smaller size and maybe have some physical disability are gonna have a problem using some of the firearms that are gonna be left if this ordinance should pass. What this ordinance done, does, is effectively bans all two-inch revolvers manufactured by Smith &amp; Wesson, Colt, Ruger, Rossi, and Taurus.
I just want, the reason I'm looking at you is that I want to make sure that you're leaving some time for some of the other speakers as well.
Well, in that point, I think that, maybe I should end this so that our people can in fact speak, but I think that the fact that your, this ordinance would prohibit probably the most popular form of firearm that's chosen by people with smaller hands, including off-duty police officers and for their wives and spouses, that, that should be looked at. That, that class of revolver should not be banned by this ordinance. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Vampola, followed by Merrill Gibson, and then Jennifer Williams.
First of all, I want to say I really don't have a big problem with that fingerprint thing. Sounds like a good way to catch criminals, and I'm all for catching criminals. 24 years ago, I lost the fingers on my left hand in an industrial accident, so I got one good hand now, I'm 44-years-old. Well, my good hand isn't so good anymore, because I use it to do everything I need to do around the house, I got tendonitis in it. I have a small handgun that I use for home protection. I am a victim of a crime, I was robbed in the middle of the night, I woke up with a .45 on the end of my nose and a shotgun in my ribs, and it hurt, still hurts. I've got three kids and a wife at home, and I work all day. My wife has access to my handgun, which is, I measured it last night, it is a half-an-inch too small in either dimension. It's in a lock box next to my bed, it's bolted to the floor, it's got a combination lock on it, so no one can get into it except me and my wife, and we can get to it pretty quick. Now, my wife is a pretty petite woman, and she can't handle a big gun either. This is an unfair law. It's gonna affect me and my wife, but it won't affect the criminal. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Merrill Gibson, followed by Jennifer Williams, and if we're still going, then Reverend Jesse Lee Peterson.
Yes, my name is Merrill Gibson, and I'm representing the NRA Disabled Shooting Services Division. By disarming disabled people who are potential victims and doing nothing to prevent criminals from obtaining firearms, this ordinance will increase, not decrease, injury and death. This ordinance will, of course, only affect lawful transfers. The Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms reports that nationally, only 7% of criminals obtain their firearms through legal means. The California figure is much, probably much lower, since in contrast to most other states, private-party, non-background-checked transfers are illegal here. Mr. Fuhr tells us that a little more than a half of criminals use small handguns, so that at most, this ordinance would affect only about 3.5% of criminals. But what about this tiny number of criminals? Are they going to give up crime because they can't get a small gun? No, they're just going to learn to do what the other 96.5% do, find an illegal gun connection, or use a bigger, deadlier gun, and find a way of concealing it. Perhaps they will have to wear a bulkier sweatshirt than style dictates. Will slightly inconveniencing of very few criminals compensate for removing lifesaving devices from some law-abiding citizens? I hopefully, I hope that you will conclude that it does not. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Williams.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Williams, and I'm here today to oppose this ordinance. The first thing that I want to bring up is a technical matter, this is just a matter of fact, is that the ATF report shows that out of the top 10 gun traced, only six were semi-automatic pistols at all. So, we're excluding revolvers. Two were revolvers, one is a rifle, one is a shotgun. Total semi-automatic pistols constitute only 13% of crime guns, and this statistic, on this tracing statistic, when you say the top 10 guns, you're talking about 23% of all of the guns traced, so the top 10 of a very small number, this is an infinite statistic. I have all sympathy for people who have been victims of gun crime. I have been victim of crime, violent crime. I was, when I was very young, not very young, but now that I'm 30, I've turned 30, it's seems a lot long, longer ago, when I was 15, I was violently raped and beaten with a baseball bat by five grown men. I learned from that experience that the police cannot be there to protect me. They were not able to predict the event, so they couldn't protect me from it occurring. They were not able to intervene in the event, because I could not get to a phone, they were not able in the end to resolve it, because that is something that I still have to deal with today. As part of my dealing with it, I feel that it is of utmost importance for me to be responsible for my personal safety. My firearm of choice is a firearm that would be banned under this ordinance, is the ordinance, is the firearm that I would feel comfortable preserving and protecting my life and my personal safety with it, and I please, I please, ask you to look at this again, and look at people who are trying for their safe, to be safe in using their firearm, and keep themselves safe. Thank you.
Thank you. That's used up the first round of time for those in opposition, so.
I would, at least like, I represent the black community, I'd like to have a few minutes.
Yes, I, I know you do, sir, and, but I-
I still would like to have a few minutes, I came a long ways, I put aside-
Well, sir, if you'll just, let me finish the sentence, what I'd like to do now, since we had seven minutes for the opposition, is do the seven minutes for those in support, and then we can come back to the opposition for a few more minutes, and you're the next in line.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
Stay cool. All right. We're now going to start the clock over again, and hear from the first round of people who are in support. Got the clock set? Okay, well, but it's already running, and I haven't called them yet, can you set it back again? Okay. Louis Tolly, Anne Rice Lane, Theo and Nico Melanopoulos, the Peizers, and we'll see how far we get. Go ahead.
Hi, Louis Tolly with Handgun Control. Several years ago, the gun industry began designing and marketing a new class of weapons, what they call pocket rockets. They deliberately make them very, very small, and yet in high caliber, what they call stopping power, and their only purpose is to carry in your pocket on the street. That's the only purpose for which they're designed, it's the only purpose which they're marketed. At the same time, the gun lobby has gone state by state, making it easier for people to carry weapons on the street. So, the gun industry and the gun lobby have been working together to promote this new generation of tiny handguns. But it's illegal in California and in Los Angeles to carry guns in your pocket, so the very purpose for these weapons is illegal in this city. These weapons are not made for people with small hands, they're not designed to be lightweight, they're not designed for self-defense in your house, they're designed for one purpose, to slip into your pocket when you walk down the street. That's illegal, and these weapons shouldn't be sold. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Anne Rice Lane from Women Against Gun Violence. I'm a resident of the city of Los Angeles, and I want to make one thing very clear, this is not a bill, an ordinance, which would disarm anyone who currently owns a weapon, it covers the sales of guns only, and just because the size of a gun seems to represent a bigger gun, it doesn't necessarily. These little pocket rockets, as they're called in the trade, ultra-compact guns, are incredibly powerful guns, which are very difficult to handle, they have a very short barrel, and the repercussions on the person firing the weapon can be very severe. Women Against Gun Violence is a seven-and-a-half-year-old organization, which is very, very concerned about access to guns by criminals and by children, and we are, we're a part of the task force which developed this ordinance, and we think that Los Angeles should join Oakland and San Francisco, which have already passed this ordinance, and that it will be found to be constitutionally sound. We are anxious to do anything that can make our city safer by keeping guns out of the hands of criminals and kids. Thank you.
We are Nico and Theo Melanopoulos, 14-year-old co-founders of Kids Voice ally. We are here today in support of your initiative to ban the sale of pocket rockets, pocket rockets in Los Angeles. You have shown a great deal of leadership.
Grownups think that there is an individual guaranteed right in our constitution to carry a gun. This just isn't so. But the Constitution of the state of California, Article 1, Section 28(c), does guarantee that all students and staff have an inalienable right to campuses which are safe, secure, and peaceful. The recent school shooting in Santee clearly has infringed on the right of students and teachers in Santana High School. And to those of you who worked so hard to pass this legislation, thank you Councilmember Misakowski, Councilmember Pacheco, and Councilmember Fuhr for taking leadership on this issue. On behalf of the kids of the city, congratulations on your efforts.
On the, on this pocket rocket initiative, and with the total ban on the sale of ammunition that you'll be voting on next week, listen to your hearts when you vote. More than 50 kids in Los Angeles lose their lives to gun violence each year, this must stop.
But your enactment of this legislation today is a step in the right direction, and the kids of this city know that you will pass the total ban of the sale of gun ammunition when it comes before you next week. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. and Mrs. Peizer.
I'll try not to break down this time.
It's okay.
I never had a gun in my hand before I was in the Army, and I haven't touched one since I'm out. I see absolutely no reason for a law-abiding person to be carrying a gun. About the only exception might be the rare person who actually goes out to hunt his own food. Not too many of those around today, not too much wild food out there available. And not too many of us know how to dress the animal, anyway. From where I stand, the proliferation of guns is probably the prime cause of so much of the crime. If we can make one small step that would minimize this proliferation, I think it's a step in the right direction.
And I agree completely. We need, we need to, especially these concealed weapons, ban them, not only citywide, statewide. Without a concealed weapon, the murderer of my daughter would not have murdered, because she was a very street-smart, paramedic firefighter, and she knew how to handle herself, but she had no clue what was coming. So, I urge everybody to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Petra Langer and Susan Courtwright, and then I have a feeling we'll be out of time, but if we're not, I'll let you know.
Hello, my name is Petra Langer, and I am a resident of the city of Los Angeles, and I am a mother of an 18-year-old and a 16-year-old, and a member of the West Los Angeles Chapter of the Million Mom March. And I became involved in the march, I went to Washington last year, because I also feel that the proliferation of guns in our society is a terrible thing, and I am going to do everything I possibly can to prevent that proliferation and to reverse it, and I urge you to vote on this, in support of this ordinance today. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Courtwright.
Thank you, Madam President, I'd like to thank the entire council for honoring my brother, the first council meeting of the new century here, my brother Michael, that's from my family. Quickly, I'd like to say that the logic precludes little red lights going off in everybody when you have a nomenclature called pocket rocket. 150 years ago, your predecessors, the very first city council, their very first legislation was a gun control legislation. Derringers were outlawed because perpetrators got the good side, because they were hidden, and honest citizens didn't. Now, we have guns coming in, cheap manufacturer from overseas, we're all grownups, we know this is happening, and they're sold by American dealers. They're not safe for the people who own them, and they're not safe for any of us who are walking the streets. And that's all we're trying to do today, we're not trying to outlaw guns. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna take one more speaker on this side, and then I'm gonna take the gentleman I offered, I cut off on the other side, and then we're gonna close the hearing, so go ahead. Are you Gail Powers? Gail Powers was the next speaker.
Okay.
Sure, just tell me who you are, so I can get your card in the right.
Thank you, Madam Chair, my name is Carol Ann Taylor. I'm a member of Women Against Gun Violence, as well as a member of the Million Mom March. I'm here on behalf of these two organizations to support Mike Fuhr's ordinance to pass this ordinance for the ban of the sale of the ultra-compact gun in the city of Los Angeles. I have three, three main reasons why. The first is my brother-in-law came home from Vietnam in 1970, he had a small weapon in his suitcase, and while we were all at home, he pulled that gun out of his suitcase, and he shot my 25-year-old sister in the head, and she died immediately. That was the beginning of the destruction of my family. Again, in 1991, my ex-husband purchased a gun for the protection of our home, and in a fit of anger, that very same gun he bought to protect our home and our family was put to my head. So, by the grace of God, we stand here today, I stand here today, and that, you know, it's just a blessing that I'm here. And finally, in 1993, that was a small, compact gun as well. In 1993, my only child, 17-years-old Willie Brooks, while he stood on the sidewalk talking to a friend, two guys with nine-millimeter guns, small, compact, concealable guns, fired, and one bullet hit my son's back, and I am now childless. So, gun violence has destroyed a lot of my family members. My father never recovered, and it has just gone from one generation to another. We continue to say that we care about our children, we care about our communities, and I continue to say, if in fact we mean what we say, then Mike Fuhr's ordinance should be put forward and into law in the city of Los Angeles. I think we have wasted too much time, and I don't think anything is more valuable than a human life. I think if any one of us is pushed to the brink, I think we keep looking for a certain type of individual that will, you know, commit a crime or use a concealed gun to take someone's life, I think with a weapon around, if any one of us in this room is pushed, that we might use a very small weapon like that. So, I'd like to see Mike Fuhr, and Mike Fuhr, and all those people that work with you, I applaud your courage, and I thank Anne Rice Lane of Women Against Gun Violence, and Donna Dees, and all the supporters, so we can clean up our city and our country, enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on, hold on. No, you're all right, go ahead. Reverend Peterson, I did say I would let you be heard, I've been, in the meantime, politely reminded that the hearing's supposed to be closed, so you will be the last speaker.
All right, thank you very much. My name is Reverend Jesse Lee Peterson, and I'm founder and president of a national nonprofit organization called Bond, and we're rebuilding the family by rebuilding the man. We are located in Nate Holden District, I live about two streets over from Nate. I first would like to ask, how many of you on the city council live in the inner cities? May I see a show of hand?
No, just, just, sir, just say what you have to say, so that we can get on with this.
And my second question, how- And my second question, how many of you own guns to protect yourself? Can I see a show of hand?
No, you can't. Can you please just say what you have to say?
My point is, I, I walk in here, and I see that you're protected by police officers with guns, and many of you, when you go home, you're behind high doors and big fences, and you too have guns to protect yourself. For the last decade or so, I worked with black women who don't have husbands in their homes, who live in the inner cities. And when they come in from work, many times they're attacked by criminals who own guns, not innocents. And if you were to take away their rights to bear arms, in essence, you're saying to black Americans, "We don't give a damn about you. We live protective, and we're going to make sure that you are not." This is a racist idea. There, there are many black Americans, men and women, who have not committed crimes. If you should pass laws such as these, then you're saying to them that you don't care. Nate, I live right down the street from you. You're running for Congress. If you care at all about black Americans and about the blacks in your community, it's time to protect them. There are over 700 laws on, gun laws on the book in California, and in Los Angeles County, there are more laws than the average city. And yet crimes are going up, and that is because you failed at dealing with the criminals, and now you're coming after the innocents, and you're patting yourselves on the back every, every night, saying that you have done a good job. That's not true. And I realize that most of you have a lot of personal issues in your lives, and it's difficult to do the right thing, but you need to think about what's happening to blacks and Hispanics in the inner-city area.
Thank you. So I just want to remind you that...
Let me just say this real fast.
Yeah, real fast.
Handguns are used for protection against criminal nearly 2 million times. This is crazy...
All right, thank you.
...that you want to take away our rights to bear arms. So I urge you in closing, I appreciate your patience, I urge you in closing to vote against this bill. I know you heard a lot of...
Okay, thank you. Come on, you're concluding, and then you're concluding, and then you're concluding.
I urge you to vote against this bill.
I heard you. Okay, thank you. That closes the public hearing. I'm sorry, Mr. Green, the time's up. All of, I know you do, so do a lot of other people, but there's already been a hearing on this, and we appreciate everybody who took the time to come down here on both sides of the issue and be heard. Everybody's card will be a part of the file. If you want to prove to anybody you were here, I'll vouch for it, because I have all the cards here. That closes, that closes the public hearing. Take it easy, Mark. We have a number of council members who wish to be heard. The public hearing is now closed. Mr. Fuhr is first.
Thank you, Madam President. As I speak, I'd like to ask two members of the city create a task force on this issue, Whit Collins and Lieutenant Farrell, to please come to the center table. And because time is short, I'll speak as they do that. Colleagues, this ordinance would prohibit the sale, not the possession, the sale of concealable, compact weapons in the City of Los Angeles. We would join the cities of Oakland and San Francisco, who have already adopted the standards that our task force, represented by these two individuals, proposes. I'm asking colleagues that you join with the unanimous Police Commission, with the Chief of Police, with the Police Department's Guns Unit, and the Public Safety Committee in endorsing this ordinance, and here's why. These concealable, compact weapons are, in fact, weapons of choice for criminals. Chief Parks eloquently stated this morning that his concerns regarding the public safety challenge these weapons poses are two. He's concerned about the safety of residents in the City of Los Angeles, and he's concerned about the safety of police officers. Chief Parks made very clear that because these are the guns of choice for criminals, his officers are more jeopardized by the constant flow of these weapons into our community than they are by other weapons. We should all care about the safety of our residents and our Police Department members. Now, let's be clear about what's at stake here. This ordinance precludes weapons of a certain length from being sold in the City of Los Angeles, giving the lie to the arguments that have been made, that it makes it more difficult for women or people are disabled to use guns. I have here before me a piece from the Smith &amp; Wesson website. Smith &amp; Wesson aggressively markets to women. They have a Lady Smith line of guns. This weapon, easily found on the website, satisfies the requirements of this ordinance. Let's be clear, the ordinance doesn't speak to the weight of the gun, and it doesn't speak to the size of the handle, the two issues that actually do have an impact on who can use a gun. It has to do with one thing and one thing only, and that's whether the weapon is easily concealable because it's small. Easily concealable means used in crime. In a city where there's been no new concealed weapons permit issued since 1998, and only 16 renewed, why on earth would we want to allow a constant flow of these weapons into our communities when it's illegal to use them for the purpose for which they're made for almost everybody in the City of Los Angeles? Weapons that need to be used for self-defense, if people believe they have to use them, are readily available that satisfy this ordinance. Now, what I'd like to do is to call on Lieutenant Farrell and Whit Collins, again, expert members of our task force recommending this proposal, to demonstrate what these guns are and what it means to withhold from the market these easily concealable ones, and what weapons would remain. Please.
Lieutenant Don Farrell. This is the pistol that comes to mind when you speak about ultra-compact firearms. This is a small 22 semi-automatic pistol. Obviously, it does not meet the, it is too small to have been sold in the Los Angeles if this ordinance passes. Here's another firearm that is obviously much larger than the, the previous one, has a very large grip, it's very heavy, very well-made Heckler &amp; Koch nine-millimeter pistol. This is also, would be banned from sale in the City of Los Angeles, because it is just slightly under the six-and-three-quarter-inch overall length that is required. As to weapons that can be managed by small-handed individuals, here is a Smith &amp; Wesson revolver that would, in fact, be available for sale even if this ordinance passes. It is, it meets the six-and-three-quarter-inch overall length, it meets the four-and-a-half-inch overall height, and as you can see, it has a very slender hand grip for, for any size hand, and the distance between the trigger and the back strap is appropriate for even a small statured person. So there are weapons out there, handguns out there, that would be allowed for sale for, for any member of our community, even with the passage of this law.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Whit, do you want to add anything to that presentation?
Yes. You should understand, okay, let's get this thing open. You should understand that manufacturers build many different models and calibers on the individual frame involved of their product, and they can govern the length of the barrel. To a great degree, they can govern the configuration of the hand grip, and Smith &amp; Wesson makes a number of 22 and 32 and 38 caliber handguns, which, in their one-and-seven-eighths-inch barrel, are too small. And I think that the inference is made that when we cancel out a short-barreled gun, we cancel out the only guns that are serviceable for people who are handicapped or frail, the aged and the ill. And that's not the case. I'd like to mention that when you inspect the California Department of Justice website for the guns that are rostered as okay for sale, firearms like this, on the small frame with very short barrels, have been chosen to be certified by numerous manufacturers in larger quantities than firearms like this, which are known to be well over already existing regulations about pocket rockets. The notion that a pocket rocket is the only arm that is serviceable for a person who is frail is simply wrong, and it plays upon fears of people who are not familiar with the wide range of arms available, or that could be available legally in California.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Thank you, Madam President.
Ms. Miesakowski.
I want to thank the members of the Los Angeles Handgun Task Force for looking to bring forward a meaningful effort such as this one. And members of the council, I think the, the underlying word that has to be used again and again and again here is concealable. Not lightweight, not easily used, but concealable. As we've just been able to have demonstrated by the Police Department, there are lightweight weapons that are appropriate, that can be used by folks who have had concerns, that would be legal for sale in the City of Los Angeles. But those that would not are those, as, as shown, are so small that are meant and are sold for purposes of being so small that they can be hidden, can be R compact, and that's what we have to deal with. They, they are among the majority of those weapons that the police have to trace, and they have to trace them because they are found in either illegal circumstances, used in the commission of a crime, in possession of someone who shouldn't have one. And that in itself, I think, is merited as to why we should adopt this. This, just to let the council members know, has been enacted in other cities in the State of California, in San Francisco and Oakland in particular. It was not challenged, it was, it is, it has been a successful ordinance in effect. And again, I think that here, as reasonably presented by our handgun task force, supported by the Police Department, the Police Chief, the Police Commission, and your Public Safety Committee, it is a step forward that I think we ought to take, and remove the sale of these weapons, which, as we are looking at increasing crime numbers, increasing statistics in the area of guns being used in the commission of crime, that we must take this step.
Mr. Holden.
I think you're showing me these weapons here. This one here is like a Saturday Night Special in order thereof.
Yes, sir.
And this one also would be illegal.
Yes, sir, it is too small.
It's too small. And, but you have one here that would qualify for the small hand.
Yes, sir.
So for the gentleman who's right-handed, but he had his left hand damaged, he could still use this weapon to defend himself.
And others of similar size.
And others of similar size. Thank you. Mark, I didn't aim right, but I do want to, I do want to say this, that there's been a lot of discussion about Saturday Night Specials since the shooting of Senator Kennedy, Robert Kennedy, before and thereafter, and also the Press Secretary for President Reagan, Brady, Brady, Brady. I think that this is, the possession of guns has been kind of open-ended, and the time has come, we've got to have some kind of control. I want my neighbor to understand that whatever we vote on in the State of California or here, it doesn't apply specifically to the African-American community. It's citywide, countywide, or statewide. It's all over. It's not designed to deny one group of people the right to bear arms. That's not what I will ever vote for. But I can tell you this, with all the shooting in our community, we have to address this problem, and the youngsters are concealing these weapons. And most of the weapons they use now, it's not the AK-47, that was a situation where I bought those weapons before, if you were around, and made a big point where it became law, where you could not buy certain kind of assault weapons. So I just want you to know that I intend to vote for this, this ordinance. It's not against my community, I don't feel that at all, and it's not against you or anyone that you know. It's just that we want to offer the best protection of the innocent that we possibly can. And for the example you gave, is that the woman coming home at night should have a weapon in order to defend herself, but she would have been in violation of the law if she did not have a permit to carry a concealed weapon. So we don't want to encourage them to do that either. That's why we have law enforcement officers. They can't be at all places all the time, but they offer the best protection for us that's available anywhere in any community. And I want to also say that, do you get fingerprinted? You, you put your fingerprints down, don't you?
Yes, sir.
And if we can require the law enforcement officers to fix their thumbprint, we can require a law enforcement officer to comply with the same law that we comply with, that we're going to enforce regarding small weapons, then I think we should do the same thing, we should do no less. And so therefore...
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
My time's over.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
I wouldn't dream of stopping you unless it were. Mr. Pacheco.
I was going to say something, but I just want to move the previous question at this point.
All right, previous question has been moved. Is there any objection to the previous question? All right, open the roll. That means debate is cut off. The item is now before us, item 13. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, two noes.
That is approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. First worth on that. The ordinance, now, hold on, the ordinance has to go over a week, because there aren't 12 of us here. So it's approved on first reading, it'll come up again in one week, takes eight votes, it'll be back in a week. All right, that takes care of that item. Mr. Fuhr, I believe, is excused, and seems to have left. That brings us to item 14, had an amendment. Mr. Pacheco.
They passed out the amendment. Madam President, colleagues, ask that we move item 14 as amended by 14a, includes the CLA and ORS, and the CRE to report on the action items jointly with the Housing Department.
All right. Anybody else? Open the roll on Mr. Pacheco's motion, which includes the amendment. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, that's approved. Next item.
Madam President, the City Attorney requests that item number 60a, which is one of the closed sessions on the continued agenda, that that matter be continued to Friday, March 23rd.
Very prudent indeed. That item is now continued. Which leaves us with, what are we up to?
Item number 50. There was a card on the item.
There certainly was. Item 19, which also has a card, has been continued. Item 50. Mr. Green.
You know, I'm glad that, I really want to talk on the other item, but I couldn't.
Sorry.
Time had run out.
You're in the lead of other people.
Yeah, but it ran out for that fellow, the Reverend, his time had run out.
I know.
See, one thing, I know the laws, and I also know that we have George Orwell's Rule from Animal Farm, we're all equal, some are equal than others, and I guess I'm not as equal as the Reverend, but I'm glad it passed. Anyway, item number 50, on a much more frivolous basis, and a much less, this is a very heavy meeting, so to speak, but this is a very frivolous item, yet I had a comment on it. This is relevant, the City Engineer Report, relative to inclusion of the name of Dear Abby on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. Now, I know you've honored Dear Abby in the past, and, and we all love Dear Abby, et cetera, but what about people that don't have stars on the Walk of Fame that ought to, like Wink Martindale? I don't know if Bob Dylan or Bruce Springsteen have stars on the Walk of Fame, but if we're going to give a, a star to Dear Abby, I think we ought to look in, in some perspective as to the overall contributions of other people. Wink Martindale, whom I've had the pleasure of meet many a time, has hosted something nineteen game shows. He has no star on the Walk of Fame. Bob Dylan's won Grammy Awards. I don't think Bob Dylan's got a star on the Walk of Fame. Bruce the Boss Springsteen, from my home state of New Jersey, has no star on the Walk of Fame. So I'd just like you to consider, before you give Dear Abby a star on the Walk of Fame, that you give some of the other legends a star on the Walk of Fame also. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing, and item, we've already lost track. Item 50 is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. What do we have left? All right, members of the council, I have two people who tell me they have to leave urgently, so we're going to go directly to public comment. This is the time for a comment on items within the council's purview, but not on today's agenda, and we will hear from Melrose Larry Green.
Guess what? I'm going to give you the comment that I was going to make on the, it's legal.
Somehow I thought you would.
Well, I may not be a mayor.
But could you please just do it and get it over with?
By the way, I have a joke for you all, folks.
No, no, come on, Larry, just do it and get it over with.
I may not become mayor, but I may play one on TV. You stepped in my line, Ruth, thank you. Okay. The item, people hopefully will be watching this on, on, on the replay tonight, because I watch this very often when I can't make a meeting, and it's exciting. I think it's 26,000 deaths a year, homicides from handguns. The figure is something in that area. It's, it's more than 18,000 or less than 30,000, but it's an amazing number of deaths from handguns. I would love to see a day when we don't even have to have cops carry guns, maybe 20 years from now, or 30 years. I'm against guns in general, and I'm really glad that, that the city council passed that fingerprint ordinance and banned something called pocket rockets. And when the Constitution was written, it was to protect the citizens against a well-regulated militia. They didn't consider pocket rockets and AK-47s and, and Uzis, and all kinds of other implements or destructions that are out there. And come July 1st, there are going to be a lot of new faces coming down here. We might have Mike Wu back, we might have Tom Hayden here, a lot of people. And I hope that we become more progressive, and I think those comments about being racism, that you're denying certain people, I don't know what that guy is smoking, but he's out of his mind. I applaud you, I know the time is running low, I know that it's the heat of the season, it's tax season for me, plus my other thing I'm doing, but you know, there's something about me, Ruth, and the rest of you, I just seem to make the time to come to these city council meetings. And in closing, I'd like to say that all these would-be political candidates, instead of holding press conferences outside the building, outside Parker Center, and outside City Hall, why don't they come on in every two... why don't they come on in every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. and be part of the process? Because if you want to become mayor, you ought to get to know the city council because they have a lot of influence what the mayor gets done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That closes the public comment period and do we still have a quorum? I think we're going to wind up having to continue the last three items. So those will all be carried over until Friday. Everybody needs to plan on dealing with them. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. What else do we have?
Motions for posting and referral.
Without objection, they are posted and referred.
And there is an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Pacheco requests to be excused to leave early March 30th at city business and a motion is required.
All right. Ms. Muzikowski moves. Mr. Ridley Thomas seconds, unanimous vote.
That clears the desk.
Did we get me on the 28th? I have to do some city business on the 28th. Okay, let's do that. Does that mean policy, I hope? All right. Ms. Walters moves. Mr. Pacheco seconds, unanimous vote. And I believe that does it. Yes? Any adjourning motions or are we, we have adjourning motions? All right. Would everybody please stand for adjourning motions? Mr. Hernandez.
Yep. Madam Chair, members of the council, I have two adjourning motions for today. First, I would ask us to adjourn in name of Leslie Koltai, who for 15 years served as the chancellor of the Los Angeles Community College District in the 1970s and 80s. He saw some of the most dramatic growth in our community college system and also had to deal with some of the decline of participation in our community college system. But he was visionary, provided a tremendous amount of leadership. I know that I got to know him in the later part of the 1980s and I did not know that he basically had come to this country from Hungary, had been part of the Voice of America, basically dealing with the Iron Curtain and played an influential role in the fight for freedom. There's a foundation set in his name and donations are asked to be sent to the Los Angeles Community College District Foundation for Leslie Koltai Fund and Claire Blair Sellers at the Los Angeles Community College District 770, Wilshire Boulevard. The second adjourning motion is for someone who I knew for many years. I'd say close to 40 years. It's Mary J. Nguyen. She lived in Montecito Heights for 45 years. She was 89-years-old and she used to maneuver herself with a wheelchair to open up the Senior Citizen Center every day at Montecito Heights. And before that, she was in Employee Department Recreation and Parks and played an important role to a lot of the youth there. She died in a tragic fire at her home over the weekend. She was known as someone who basically cared a lot for pets. They kind of described her home as a pet rat. She knew where everything was, she collected everything. And the people of Montecito Heights look at Mary as an institution. The children who used the recreation center all knew her and the seniors who used that senior center all knew her and she'll be sorely missed.
Thank you. Mr. Holden.
Sad to announce that maybe Mark want to second this motion, but Gwen Pottinger was a business and property owner on Jefferson Boulevard. She brought breakaway technology to the community, teaching kids and seniors how to learn and operate computers. Mrs. Pottinger worked diligently with the Jefferson Park Improvement Project and she started J Pick, a business community, business committee. Her generosity and spirit will continue to live in Jefferson Park and in everyone's she touched. Celebration of life is planned for 11:00 a.m. Saturday, March 24th at Trinity Baptist Church on 2040 West Jefferson Boulevard.
Thank you. Any others? Call the roll. Thank you. We are adjourned. Friday, we're going to have not only Friday's agenda but the rest of today's agenda, so please come early. Vote early and vote often.